All right. Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order because of COVID-19. This meeting, March 17, 2020, is being held via teleconference or via Zoom. Board members, all members are present, and therefore we have a quorum. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevek has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the agenda is approved. Next is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we have an opportu-- we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March 3, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Mr. Figgers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Dr. Green, superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. I believe we have some updates that the team is queuing up. Is that, is that true? Okay, no, we don't. All right, so I've got several remarks that I'd like to make. And forgive me as I move through these, everyone. Greetings, board members, to all of our JPS team members, our scholars, parents, community members, all of those who are, have signed on or those who will be listening later on to this recording. As is probably top of mind for everyone else, I want to speak a bit about the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic and some of the things that we've been doing to address it and just to make sure that we bring everyone up on that. As we work through the coronavirus pandemic together as a community, please know that the district's top priority is the well-being of scholars, their families, and our team members. Because we know that some of our families will need assistance with meals, starting tomorrow, March 18, 2020, we will open 12 Grab and Go meal sites. 12 Grab and Go meal sites where parents can pick up breakfast and lunch boxes from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Meal boxes are free for children 18 and under. And parents can purchase those meals of breakfast, can be purchased for $2.50. And lunch can be purchased for $3.25. I'm going to pause right there. I know this is a bit different for everyone, but if everyone on the line can mute their, their phones, we'll make sure that we don't have too much background noise. All right? Everyone, please mute your phones. Thank you. So again, we'll have 12 distribution sites for meals. They're free for children 18 and under. For parents, those cost for breakfast, it's $2.50, and for lunch, it's $3.25. The following schools will serve as the distribution sites for meals. They are Boyd Elementary, North Jackson Elementary, Span Elementary, Blackburn Middle, Lake Elementary, Raines Elementary, Galloway Elementary, Smith Elementary, Peoples Middle School, Marshall Elementary, Wilkins Elementary, and Witten Middle School. Again, that's Boyd, Northwest, Span, Blackburn, Lake, Raines, Galloway, Smith, Peoples, Marshall, Wilkins, and Witten. And all of those are on our website. They're listed on our website as well. You can go to either of those sites. You don't have to go to the school that you attend or in your Peter Pan or your neighborhood. But obviously, we urge you to go to the one that's closest and most convenient to you. Additionally, there will be Grab and Go Meal Box locations tomorrow, Wednesday, March 18, from 4 until 6 p.m. And that will be held or located at Pecan Park Elementary, which is at 415 Clayburn Avenue. And that's, we'll have 100 to 150 boxes available there. That's tomorrow evening. So folks who are in that area or missed the Grab and Go distribution earlier in the day can go to Pecan Park. And then lastly, we'll have a Grab and Go Meal Box location Saturday, March 21st, and that's from 10 until 12. That'll be held at Peoples Middle School, which is at 2940 Belvedere Drive. They'll have about 40, 400 boxes. Again, at Peoples this Saturday, the 21st, from 10 until 12. And so we, we, we've done some work to try to create opportunities for those who might need additional help with feeding during this time to go to those, those sites. During this extended school closure, I know that many parents and guardians share our concerns about providing continuous learning opportunities for their scholars. To assist with that, our team has identified several resources for their use at home. So I want to talk a little bit about that now. Each of the meal sites that I've just listed, and again, those are listed on our website, each of the meal sites will distribute distance learning packets for scholars from pre-K through eighth grade. So again, at each of those distribution meal sites, there will be distance learning packets for scholars in pre-K through eighth grade. And those packets will include activities for mathematics and English language arts, science, social studies, and writing. There'll be a reading log included there. And I'm told there's also science experiments for young people to conduct while they're at home. So those packets will be available for pre-K through eighth grade. Our high school scholars can access Canvas, which is a platform that we use. They can access it with their, using their school login information for, for grade level activities. Students can access school grade level activities using Canvas and using their login information. We also have online distance learning resources for scholars that can be found on our website. And there you'll find tons of resources that can be, that can be used to augment our scholars' learning. If you have easy access to the internet and don't want to pick up the packets that are available at those sites, you can just go on to the, on to our website, and those, those packets are available there as well. That information is available there as well. We'll be adding more information and more resources over time, including some supports for students with, specific supports for students with special needs, and even a sample schedule for, for parents. I want to take a moment now just to talk about that. It is really, really important, and I'm sure many of our parents know this, but it bears mentioning, really important that, that our young people experience some level of structure while, while dealing with this school closure. And so to the extent that parents and guardians, that we can create a schedule for them, a time that they're reading, and a time that they're working through either the, the paper copy of the packet that we have, or doing a reading log, or, or something else, using the online tools, it's very important that we have a structured time that they get up, that they do whatever chores, that they are in the, the school or the learning mode, any break time that you want to build in, that sort of thing, to the degree that you can create that structure. It'll ensure that when it's time for us to transition back to school, that there won't be such a tough transition for young people. And also, in thinking about, this is a stressful time for the adults, of course, for you parents. We've seen tons of memes on social media, of parents who are, who are dealing with trying to juggle your adult stuff, work or what have you, as well as trying to, to teach and support your young people at home. And so we know it is a challenge and appreciate your patience as we move these challenging times together. But because it is stressful, we know it's stressful for adults, it's also, and it can be stressful for our young people as well. So in addition to all of the opportunities for scholars to learn more about those core curricular subjects, it's very important that we also provide them with times to express themselves more creatively and to support their social and emotional needs as well. So you might consider some of these activities. You could take a walk in the neighborhood or a nature walk and discuss what you see, and read a variety of texts, that's magazines and online articles, books, of course, and other items that, that might be around the house. That includes recipes and, and how-to manuals and all that sort of thing. Also, exercising. Please, 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 ensure that young people get some opportunities to exercise and to kind of work out some of that energy that they have. Might also dance during that time. I know I personally, from time to time, will take a boogie break at work and just kind of get some of that energy out. It's very important. It also helps to kind of manage some of the anxious energy that you might have. Drawing. Encourage young people to draw or paint or color and maybe create that next masterpiece, as well as writing a story or a poem or even a song. All of these things can help young people to process and to, again, to use some of their energies and, and their creativity and to just provide some more opportunities for them to be meaningfully engaged. To our JBS team members, I know that there are questions and concerns about whether staff members will be paid during this time of closure. This is a concern that we share, along with our state and local leaders as well. On tonight's agenda, I'm recommending to the board formally that they approve the district's school closure, as well as, as well as approval of, of an issuance of administrative leave with pay to all team members. Please note that, however, there are several functions that remain important and critical for us even during the closure. And in order for us to get those things done, and things like processing payroll, paying our bills, and preparing and distributing the meals, and several other things, some team members will be identified as essential, essential staff, and, and will be required to work during this time. And so district leaders are in the midst of that planning to ensure that the critical functions are identified and fulfilled while maintaining still health and safety of, of our scholars and families and of our team members. As you've seen, to all of our community members and board members, staff members, as you've seen, this is a rapidly evolving world health concern. It's not just a Jackson thing, of course, or Mississippi. It's a world concern. And so we continue to monitor the latest developments and the, and to collaborate with the Mississippi Department of Education, with the Mississippi State Department of Health, with the City of Jackson, of course, with our board members, and with many, many partners who have raised their hands to say that they're willing and able to support us during this time. And so we're, we're working collaboratively to understand, as deeper understandings, and as the understanding evolves over time, to understand this challenge and this pandemic, and to ensure that the most appropriate actions and response to health and safety concerns associated with coronavirus, that those actions are identified and taken. Please visit the JPS website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us for the latest information concerning the coronavirus and our efforts to protect the safety and role being of our scholars and staff members, as well as to go and to find the resources that I mentioned earlier. You can also connect with us, please connect with us, on Twitter, on Facebook, or even on our YouTube channel for the latest information. We, we know that this is a challenging time. We know that there are many more questions with regard to the, the future of this school year, how long will be out on, how, how long schools will be closed, and any of the implications for activities that were planned for the end of the school year. We know that those issues remain, and we know that folks are, are looking for answers to those. As we continue working with other superintendents, with our state superintendent, and as I said, other officials around the state, and as we have a clearer sense of the path forward, we will be sure to communicate that to you. Please be patient with us. We know people want answers right away, but we don't want to jump out there with half-baked truths and with, with information or making decisions without all of the information that's available to us. Know that we are thinking about each and everyone's best interest and seeking to do the very best in leading our district through this really challenging time. With that, board members, I believe that concludes my comments and want to turn it back over to you, Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Green. I just want to take a moment to say and to let the public know that we started our preparation for this crisis before spring break, and the team has been diligent trying to find solutions. This is one of those situations that has never happened before. We don't necessarily have the advantage of experience, but I can tell you that the district is prioritizing the safety of our children, along with the responsibilities that the district has to them educationally. With that being said, we're moving on to information items only.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question, Dr. Green, before we move on to the information items?
Sure.
Dr. Green, there was a lot of really helpful information in the PowerPoint that's attached. Could we post that PowerPoint in the coronavirus resource section of the website? And also, is there a plan to share the instructional distance learning, the information about where the distance learning information will be public? That is the first I'd heard of it, and it's great. I'm excited to hear about it. I just want to make sure people know about it.
Do questions about posting it? We'll be sure to post that information. And I got a clarification here. Actually, oops, there are a couple of clarifications that I need to make. One, it's not North-- No, let me clarify. I'm sorry. So the packet, you asked about the packet. There are packets for pre-K through 12th grade, including high school students that may need hard copies due to challenges with technology and accessibility. So I want to make sure that people know that. We do have packets for, for all grade levels. And those packets are available, again, at the feeding sites, at the, the 12 sites that we named. Those are, are listed on the website. We'll be sure to have that information. The team has already placed the big banner of folks having been in the last couple of days to the website, a big banner with regard to the coronavirus. And so folks can easily navigate to the information, and there, I don't have it up right now, but there are a few areas for folks to look in for information on the website. Around, around information for families, I think it's bucketed for information for families, information for the community and others. So go to our website for that. I'm sorry, I think I've forgotten one of the other questions. Sorry.
It was, it was largely just the communication strategy for alerting parents about the accessibility of the distance learning packets at the feeding sites.
Gotcha. We know that we have put all of this, or have started to get this out on our social media platforms. I'm not sure if it was named when the, because we also did a robocall about the, the meal sites. I'm not sure if it was named in the robocall, but that's something that we can do forward, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, board members? If not, we'll have Ms. Bingham for the information-only item.
Dr. Bingham appears to be having a little bit of a challenge with the audio. She is on the call, however.
Okay. I can, I can do it. Okay. This item, the Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting to the board for information-only the service agreement with Will's Way Pediatric Behavioral Psychology to provide an independent education evaluation. Parents have the right to request outside--
Uh-uh. No.
Was that for me? Oh. Sorry. Let me go back to it. I'm toggling between a few items here. So parents have, have the right to request an independent evaluation at the expense of the district if they disagree with an evaluation that we've done to determine a student's any special needs or what have you. And, and this is according to state board policy 74.19, 300.502. And so at the parent's request, we're bringing this item before the board to approve, to have this independent evaluation done.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, are there any questions?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Have, have we worked with this vendor before? And if not, have we checked references on the vendor?
My understanding is, I don't believe we have worked with it previously. And the, the, again, parents have the right to request the vendor that they want to use. And so, and so in this case, we, we have not vetted them because it's the parent's prerogative.
Okay, that's helpful clarification. Thank you.
Sure.
Any helpful-- What about, is there a cap on this invoice? That was a question, I think, Dr. Sevek, you brought it.
Is Dr. Bingham on? Still no. The, let me go back to it. The dollar amount that-- I'm sorry, give me one moment.
Is it possible for Dr. Bingham to answer the questions on the Zoom group chat?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, the cost is not, is not to exceed 2,000? The, the cost of this assessment is not to exceed 2,000.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
And yes, Dr., I'm sorry. And yes, Dr. Bingham, if you're available. I don't know. I've got a, I've got a note here that there's not a cap in the contract. We'd have to revise it if, if that's what's being asked for.
Yes, we need to revise that.
Any other questions? If there are no other questions on this item, we will move on to the MOU. Dr. Merritt?
Yes, good afternoon, President Johnson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Green. The recommended action is that the administration, we recommend that the administration amend the existing right now plan, MOU, between Jackson Public School District and the Community Foundation of Mississippi. And we want to amend the part that where $50,000 was allocated to the Hanover Research Group, we would like to use that money to pay for Praxis support for teachers.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. I just want to tell Dr. Merritt and his team how good it is to see how you are revising the MOU to exactly fit the current needs of the district. You know, you and I and Dr. Merritt, CFO, we used to joke about when is right now.
Yes, ma'am.
I just thank you and your team for your hard work, and I support this. Well, we're not ready to, to talk about that yet, but I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you.
Board members, now we have information-action items. Dr. Merritt?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the recommended action is that the Office of Federal Programs is recommending approval of the Signing Bonus Addendum for the 2021 school year. Of course, this is for our newly hired teachers, and it will allow us to sign them up for three-year incentive. And if they agree to teach with the district, embedded in the executive summary is some data for your purview of those, the number that we issued this year, and, and just a little date on where we are with that.
Board members, are there any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. And now we're back to Dr. Green.
President Johnson, should we have a motion to approve this item?
I was gonna, I was gonna take them all together. Yeah, all at once after we get done. Dr. Green?
Yes, ma'am. So the administration-- Make sure that this is the right-- Yes. Administration requests the board's approval of a, of a recommendation to close all schools and offices and to award administrative leave with pay for certain employees in compliance with, with the board policy. and to award administrative leave with pay for certain employees in compliance with, with the board policy, AFA, emergency closing of school. So due to the national and state emergency declaration, active measures to limit community spread and protect public health related to the coronavirus pandemic, I'm recommending that all schools and offices be closed indefinitely until such time as the emergency situation has been eliminated. After the emergency situation has been eliminated, the board will be required to reconvene to consider a recommendation to reopen schools and offices. Additionally, the recommendation is to award administrative leave to staff per board policy AFA, emergency closing of schools. The policy AFA allows to pay to continue for superintendents, principals, teachers and other employees during or for the period when any of the said schools are closed in accordance with Mississippi Code 3665101 and 3765103. Further, this policy directs that during this closure, that this period of time shall not be deducted or counted as leave. So during the period of time and all full-time and those part-time employees who have a regular set schedule will be paid in accordance with the appropriate pay schedule. That's the recommendation to board members. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Board members?
Dr. Green, this is Robbie. Are there large groups of employees who may be left out of this? It sounds like with the, that we have an opportunity here to support the vast majority of our team in JPS. Of course, we all are worried about the impact this will all have on our children and our parents. I do want to make sure that we are thinking about all of our staff members as well.
Yeah. They, we, we have included all staff, all full-time employees. So that's everyone, all full-time employees, as well as part-time employees who have a set schedule. For anyone who comes in as needed, it's too hard to try and determine what that schedule, what their pay would have been going forward, and so they're not included. That's a very small number of our staff. The vast majority of folks have a set schedule and, and a set pay that they receive. And so those folks, we want to make sure that we continue with that.
Thanks for that clarification, I appreciate that.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah. Did someone have a question? If there are no other questions, then we'll move on to the next action item. Dr. Chrisler?
Good evening to the board president, all the board members and the superintendent, Dr. Green. You have before you a recommendation to approve the RA to provide data and response services for the district. It is imperative that we secure these services to determine if a leak breach did or did not occur to analyze indicators of compromise or points of entry to do a vulnerability assessment and other tasks as outlined in the agreement. Considering the cyber risk that may still exist and to minimize the possibility of another cyber attack, the administration asks that you approve the recommendation before you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions, comments? If there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the information action items A, B, and C?
Moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Dr. Luckett and second by Dr. Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now we have consent agenda items, A, consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions?
President Johnson, I had one question and it was just in regards to whether or not we are able to confirm the lifespan on the virtual reality equipment. That was a question we raised in the last meeting. Just wanted to see if we were able to get confirmation on that item.
All right. Dr. Jackson?
I believe Dr. Jackson answered it. I'm, I'm looking for the response on, right now, I apologize.
Five years.
Okay, I apologize, I missed that earlier. I wouldn't have asked it if I seen it, but so thank you for, for looking into that.
No worries, sorry, I don't, I don't know that we got it back to you. The five years, so that for anyone who's wondering, is the anticipated lifespan? And we do expect that we'll be able to utilize, utilize the technology, you know, from what we learned at CDC, utilize it and consider using it in other ways.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Harrison, did you have a comment?
I did. I think one of us had asked about how many students we anticipate could actually take advantage of this technology opportunity. So over the five years?
Ask the question again, I'm sorry, Dr. Harrison?
How many students, are all the students at the site going to be able to use this virtual reality equipment?
Is Marshall, is Ms. Marshall Thomas on the line?
I am on it. The, the purpose for this particular use is just for students in the Ag Academy. So it's for the students that are already enrolled in Ag Academy and the additional students that will see you to become a part of that academy.
I got you good. I think Ms. Williams answered it too. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's Agricultural Academy, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items finance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mr. Figurs has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now, board members, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of the consent agenda items personnel have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Did I get a second? Harrison has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for participating in this meeting and I apologize for the irking jerk again. This is, this is all.
That's real life. Okay, guys, stay safe.
All right, everybody.
You too.
That was a great, that was a great discussion.
Thanks all.
Dr. Green about our work.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Stay tuned, we've got more to say, more to tell.
Great, thank you.
All righty, bye-bye.
Good night.